Time to 6:00 PM, Council, City, Denison, now convening for regular session. Tonight, the vacation will be given by Mark Mitchell, pastor of First Baptist Church.
Gratitude, pray. Father, we come before you today and just say thank you, God, for a great day. We thank you tonight as a city, as we come in here, we're just aware tonight, God, that you're an awesome provider and you've blessed us. We say thank you, thank you for these servants, how they give their time and so much from their lives for this community. Lord, we come tonight and ask you for wisdom, we ask you for discernment, for direction, and just pray, God, that you be honored by all that occurs in this room. In Jesus' name we pray this. Amen.
Apologies to the pride of United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation on your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proclamation, this way.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Denison by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States in Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. This is the second year in a row that we've received this award, and I just wanted to present it to you and show you, it is quite heavy, if they got a grant this year. Last year, we received a one award, this year it's a grant. And then each year that's presented, then we'll get a token to put on our plaque. And I just want to thank the entire city because of the efforts of everyone on the team, everyone in the city, the new divisions that helped give us the information and help us, you know, complete the audit to get that done, get the PAFR done. And this is for last year's, and currently we're working on 2013's audit and PAFR, and hopefully that'll be completed soon. But I just want to present that to the city and let you know we have received that plaque, and we're very proud of that. I don't know if Mr. Hammond will say anything, and I don't know, I know you know Laurie, she's my assistant finance director, and she plays a big part in the audit. Take the budget and run with it, she takes the audit and runs with it and the PAFR, and so I want to give her some recognition as well, and our entire staff does a great job, and I'm very pleased with the people we have.
Mayor, if, Mayor and Council, if I may, just say that many of us who drive by City Hall in the morning, we pull in the driveway at 8:00, know that Renee and Laurie's vehicle both, as well as many of our other accounting staff folks are here long before 8:00 AM, and they leave long after 5:00 PM. And there's been many a time on the weekends where I've been up here, and Laurie has gotten here before I have and left long after I did. I just would like to take a moment to give them a brief round of applause, to thank them for all the service they do provide. This is really, they say it's our award, it's their award, they work hard for that. If you would please join me in recognizing their actions.
Thank you. The council then received a consent agenda, agenda number three.
Motion for approval, question for vote.
Have a motion, Councilman Spindel, second, Councilmember God, all in favor, must I say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, agenda item number four, public carings in 16, 19, South Armstrong, this rocket was not here in his hand.
Don't look nearly as nice as she does, apologize for that. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The applicant, Francisco Sanchez, and the owner, Lupe Rubio, are as a lessee, would like to lease a building and operate an auto repair business. The structure has been a motorcycle repair shop. The lessee rented the building, it's on St. Luke Street, but the facility he's currently in doesn't have batteries. And so the surroundings, they're looking to remedy that by going to the next building. The surrounding zoning consists of commercial, light, industrial, single-family, 7.5, two-family district. We notified eight property owners as required by law. Two came back with approvals, there were no disapprovals, so the other folks just didn't respond. P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions that the area in front of the building be kept free of disabled cars for the purpose of parting out wrecked vehicles and cars that are non-operable. We want to try to avoid some of the stuff that happens at High Park intersection with another repair center. Staff recommends approval with conditions that the board have requested. And that concludes the staff's report. Will the council have any questions?
This is the public carings, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda? There being none, public carings closed. Question for council.
I just have one question. Have you had any issues with vehicles in front of the other building they were in?
We haven't had any reported complaints. Tom, have we had, from a code enforcement, had it enforced anything from a code standpoint?
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Rowley, second, from Councilmember Malvern, all in favor, must I say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, agenda five A, e-cigarettes, Miss Hart.
The proposed ordinance that you have, it basically will add the definition of electronic cigarettes into our current smoking in public areas ordinance that we have in our current ordinances, and it will regulate the sale to minors for businesses saying that they can't sell to minors. There is a penalty for minors who possess or consume the electronic cigarette. This is recommended by staff, basically because FDA hasn't really had any regulations placed on this yet, because it's not a regulated product in the tobacco laws that they have. It doesn't currently meet the smokeless tobacco laws that they follow for the FDA regulations. We're not the only city that has done this. Frisco recently banned e-cigarette smoking in public places and also restricts the sales to minors. Richardson, Murphy, and Flowermount have also restricted the sales to minors, and Mansfield has put a hold on all new permits for businesses coming into the city based on wanting to do more research.
Questions for council?
Make the motion to approve the request?
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second, from Councilmember God, all in favor, must I say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you, motion carries, agenda five B, this development alliance loan, Mr. Kai.
Honorable, Mayor and Council. I'm here to get the final approval for the loan agreement for the $750,000, $50,000 to fix the gas line that's being installed in an order of quadrant in the city to serve our new industry and high school. Process has taken a few months, it was in our budget, we talked about it the first year in our budget process, and we're actually budgeted a million dollars, but through some negotiations, assistance from Atlas Gas, we're able to actually get it done for $750,000. So, the end of the process, our DDA board has already approved all the resolutions and the paperwork that's required for us to borrow money, and the last step is for the council to approve those resolutions.
Very good. Questions for council? Motion.
You took it through.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Malvern, second, from Councilman Spindel, all in favor, must I say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, agenda five C, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Kai.
Mayor and Council, if you can see in your packet, and then impart the additional item that was in the reading file on Friday, the city has received a request from Little League as a proposal to add a privately owned ball field to, and they're asking for funds as well to support expansion of their lease for the use of that field. Their letter is a couple of pages, but basically they reference the fact that it's needed from a capacity standpoint. We went, the staff went back through the fields that we have, and most of y'all grew up playing on them and were familiar with them. From a capacity standpoint, we have, do not agree, but yet we recognize that there are benefits of the privately owned field that's described in this letter, as far as it has lights, it has a restroom facility that's not yet connected, but it is a nice field, and that is a quality feature that could be added compared to some of the fields that we have. So, we feel like we've looked at everything, we presented this request to the Parks and Rec Board Commission on Friday, and had a good discussion with them as well, and the minutes, draft minutes from that meeting went out Friday. They had several good ideas and thoughts about the proposal, and just wanted to offer those for consideration of council's deliberation tonight, and that would be that it'd only be for one year for now, as to whatever agreement has arrived at through tonight's discussion, mostly a trial basis. And then what they ask staff to do would be to look at the fields that we have and see what kind of recommendations we would make for quality improvements to them. We all recognize that we could improve the quality of those fields, but yet they are available, there are backstops, and there's base paths, it's just whether or not you want to slide on them or not, so they could, they could be improved, but yet they are available. But then the other part of that was, they also wanted to rent in the funding amount. There's a request from, in the proposal, that gives the council a, you know, a couple of numbers that they're asking for. The current contract per field, it's reimbursable with Little League and with Pony, is $2,300 per field. And they suggested that perhaps this would just be considered as one of those field contracts for this first year, but again, it was just a suggestion back to the council. And for various reasons that you all may also be aware of, it was their suggestion that maybe this would just be for 12 and under in order to continue to support the existence and history of Little League, 12 and under, Pony League above that. So, those are just some things that they wanted to put before you, and staff supports whatever the council wants to do in regard to funding for this as an additional asset available to the teams as well.
Discussion, council.
Clarification, David, on this $2,300, do we currently lease any fields? Or is that $2,300 going to maintain that field on an annualized basis? I was a little unclear on that.
We have contracts with Pony and Little, the $2,300 with Pony is just for expenses, just fine tuning of some of the items that they will spend.
Maintenance.
Yeah, it's more maintenance.
Property's owned by City Denison, but it's maintenance on the property.
That's correct. And it allows them some flexibility in the things that they want to spend each year on their fields. And we have $4,600 in Little League for the two fields that water.
Now, also, in range, like $2,300 to $13,000, I was, I wasn't following that.
Well, the $2,300, we felt like was the minimum in comparison to the others, but then the two numbers, $7,200 up to $13,000 is what was provided in the proposal letter from Little League. If they had the table, perhaps you could look to that page explaining the different items that they're asking for.
Councilman Rowley, if I could just just sound out a little bit, the backup they submitted, that $13,000 request is kind of an all-in, another cover. The improvements to the field saw it in certain locations, fine tuning and making it feel more attractive. They've also said if you can't, if the city can't do that, they like to entertain the electric, electrical and water plus the rental fee, the cost of actually renting the field from the owner. If the city couldn't do that, their, their basically, their bottom line ask at the end of the day is that the city cover electricity and water. And they estimated that to be $5,400. I'm not sure where the estimate, how they, they came up with the number, but that's the number they said that they think is an estimate for, for electricity and water. I think the Parks Board request is tie that to what we currently provide from a field standpoint of $2,300, and that's where that $2,300 number came from. If you take our current contribution to Little League and Pony on a per-field basis, it's $2,300 per field. Does that help answer?
Yes, the current condition of that field we're looking at, how does it relate relative to our existing practice fields or playing fields? Is it substandard, or is it?
No, it's, it's better.
It's, it's better than what we currently have?
It's better than a number of the practice fields that we have made.
How does it compare to the Pony League South field, that's, I guess you'd call it Pony League South?
It's, it's a better field than that as well.
Is that field, I mean, more directed some of the Pony, the Little League people, but is that field usable by Little League, or is the fence is too far out, or more Pony League, or high school?
Keep talking about the...
The South field, Pony League South.
It's, it's somewhat usable, but it's, it's also tied in with the other leagues, so it does provide restricted access to Little League based on the amount of traffic that's going through there. So that's one of the practice fields that's currently utilized by the league, softball, Pony, and all, but that's a usable field as well.
And that's one that's been identified in the list of the open times for being able to practice and use.
Yes, sir. Do the electric is, and for all the fields, they're paid by the, the league, it's not by the city, electric, water? They're paid by the city. City, okay, so the $2,300 plus the cost of that, so actually our true cost is higher than $2,300. Yes, sir. Plus any capital improvements, we do different amounts of maintenance for each field. Okay. So it's a $2,300 being the base, that's, their request for electric and water could be up and above that if we said $2,300 plus the cost of that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bennett, did you say that $5,400 was the estimate of the, of the utility cost?
That's the estimate that Little League arrived at, and I'm not sure what math they used to get there, but we would, we would provide, if we, whatever we did, staff would certainly encourage it to be on a reimbursing basis. We don't have any issue with electrical and water. It provides an asset from, for the community, and it touches the lives of over 400 family members, even if it's just restricted to Little League, it's over 400 families in Denison, and that's a value question, you know, is it worth, worth the cost of electricity and water? Staff feels that it is. I think the board's recommendation is simply tied to the fact that we're trying to find some nexus to what we currently offer from maintenance standpoint, and they tied it to that.
As I recall, back in, been five or six years of acting now, but we had the, we were paying electrical use for the high school field to summer league or something, but wasn't that, I thought, I was thinking that was like $8,000 or $9,000 or something like that, way off the dollar now.
Sonny, do you remember that? It seemed time, when we're paying for some youth, summer programs in June and maybe in July.
Just recall, someone's next will be, be kind of similar.
So our increased capacity, what's one field going to do for us, as far as capacity?
There's a, there's adequate number of practice times based on two practices per field, what we see right now for the number of teams, but it, you know, it's a nicer field. And we're, when we say practice fields, we're including backstops at plenty, which is not improved, but yet it is a space. When you're, depends on the size of the kids, I'm sorry, the age of kids, as to whether or not that's a real practice field.
Well, and like you said, the lights add more capacity.
They do. Especially during school year.
So, the recommendation of Parks and Rec is what on, regardless of?
Well, specifically, they said the other night that they, they certainly recommend that if you can...
That's, Parks and Rec is they?
Yes, sir, the board. Yes, sir.
And they're recommending?
They're recommending a base of $2,300 or something along those lines is at least a consideration to match the other reimbursable contracts that we have. They're recommending that we look at it on trial basis, just one year, and then to look back at the, at the facilities that we have and to bring back budget recommendations for next year about what we could do to improve what we own so that other people could benefit as well, instead of just one league benefiting from one field, because that's what the proposal is for this year, is for one league. And then they also suggested or recommended that it would be for 12 and under for Little League, and not, in order to continue to support both the separation of the two levels.
Would this thing, for Little League, would this be taking away some of these practice times needed these other fields, in other words, would you need, not, still need all those other times that the, Muntz and South or some other fields?
Okay, yes, we, we actually, in our proposal, submitted that we would be willing to withdraw the times that are allotted to us on the other fields, with the exception of Water Street, where we can utilize Waterloo, we utilize Waterloo as well, and in this field, so with the added capacity, we would be able to kind of withdraw from the other practice fields and backstops, and that would allot us a lot more time for whether it's Pony, softball, and the other groups of practice.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, the two lighted fields, we would no longer, we would need access to two lighted fields no longer.
Just, to follow up on your comment, what attracts me to this is the practice field of all the nights, and the availability to do the practice later at night, and the kids were used to playing under the lights at times, and then again, it expands it to a later evening, particularly after school's out, and so, so that's what attracts me, and I think still has been about until the end, having coached to play on this practice field with the kids. You have rock, gets that ball, and it jumps, and hits one, and the practice kind of ends real quick sometimes, but anyway, that, you know, in my opinion, the $2,300 plus utilities for a one-year commitment are probably a good, good starting point for the city to look at.
Just one other, one other point, too, that, you know, right now, as they struggle for practice facilities, again, it's the caliber of facilities for both boys and girls, that problem gets much worse on April the first-ish, when the seasons start and the game fields go away, because they're being used six days a week and all day Saturdays. So, you know, it's a pretty small investment to, to again, try to, try to bring us forward in, in addressing both, both the girls and the boys accommodations that we know that we are, are working on in a big way in this community. Secondly, you know, just again, to remind, when we look at this, it is, Little League doesn't own the field, so we, we need to be mindful of that, but also we need to be very mindful of the fact that both the Little League and the Pony programs are all supported on a day-to-day basis with volunteers that work very hard on that. We're, we're lucky to have those folks out there mowing the grass and leaving David and his staff to do the heavy lifting, plus $2,300, unlike our, our great community at Cold Pepper that gets city resources every day, so $2,300 is not, not much to ask, I think, for that. Any comments? So did you have a motion?
Yeah, I would, I'd make a motion if we approved the request for a one-year commitment for the $2,300 maintenance plus electricity and water.
And just for clarity, no restrictions on the age, whatever age kid they want to put out on there is their business.
Yeah, and if they don't suit Pony League kids as far as the size of the field, then they should.
Right. Have a motion in a second, all in favor, must I say aye? Yes. Can I re-clarify that, are you saying that this, this new field, the new field would be Pony League two? No, it's, it's, they're, Little League's entering into a lease agreement with the private owner. So they're going to take care of that one? Right. And then they're going to withdraw on the, pull back on some of the use of the Pony League South and some of the Little League. I'm just trying to make sure that that's fully understood.
Just, just to clarify, we do, in Little League, we do go up page 13 now, and there are plans in the future to expand possibly to 18, but for the sake of this lease, we have $1,300.
So basically, they have, y'all have 12 or 13 kids that are 13 years old right now, right? We don't want to prevent them from, if we go into the field because of that. Correct.
One other question, are we creating any kind of issue with water and utilities here? Is that any kind of anomaly in what was typically done from the city perspective, or are we setting a precedence here that could cause an issue? I don't believe we're setting a precedence. We have, Denison and Little League is our recognized partner, providing youth sports for boys 12 and under, and I know that they're in the process of expanding that, but that we have, we have an actual agreement with them, they're a recognized partner entity. So if another recognized partner entity that had an asset wanted to come, we would certainly explore those opportunities at that time, and if we found a value, the council found a value in that to the community, we could, we could enter into similar agreements with them, but I don't believe we're compelled to defer to court. She needs to correct me here.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's for that, if we do want to offer the sewer tap at no cost, that's in the alley behind West Warren Plaza, over to the property, I would suggest that that would be part of your motion as well.
I would, I would make my motion add that to, connect the city with that.
A motion in a second, all in favor, must I say aye? Aye. Those like sign. Motion carries. So again, just, Reese, how many kids do y'all have, 350?
With the Challenger League, there'll be 350 to 370 this year.
Right, and some of y'all signups are going on now for all the girls?
Starting Saturday.
And expecting around another 350?
We do.
So again, it's just, the public needs to realize, we've got 700 to 800 Denison kids, mostly Denison kids, playing in these leagues every night of the week. And the council's continuing to look for ways to provide the amenity that professionals come to communities they expect to have, and communities our size have more fields, and that's just where we've been. And it's been low on the priority list, with councils trying to make it a more, higher priority as funding allows. So, want to again applaud Little League, want to applaud Sonny and her staff, because the reason you have that many kids is because you run a good program. You know, the year that you run a bad program, that number gets cut in half because they go to Sherman, or McKenna, or Bell's, or whatever, so want to applaud both programs and how they're running. So David, is that going to be something that, that you need direction from us to have the Parks and Rec and them explore in trying to upgrade some of these other practice facilities?
No, sir, that's something that we'll do at a staff level and make it important to...
Yes, please do that, I'd like to say that's important.
Thank you.
Reese, turn the lights off when you leave. And the water.
All right, Mr. Springer, we'll move on back up, we have one more proclamation, if you'll, you'll come forward, please, representing the Red Cross, you're a board member of the Red Cross, correct?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, I'm Mike Springer, representing the Red Cross, Texoma Chapter, and I would like to, while you already know that with proclamation, it marches Red Cross Month. Just a little bit of information about the Red Cross or Texoma Chapter, it's Fannin, Grayson, and Cook County is the Texoma Chapter. We're very fortunate that the Texoma Chapter is in Grayson County. In respect that, we have our own vehicle, and that does not belong to the Red Cross, it belongs to Texoma Chapter. And as of two years ago, as many of you know, we had the fires towards Pottstown, and that vehicle stays here, stays here in Grayson County, and it can service, in some respects, as you can talk to some of the firemen, our vehicle got there to service our people at the same time, about the time the fire trucks got there. And we have, the Red Cross regrouped, the North Texas Division regrouped approximately two years ago, and there's 111 counties in the Texoma Chapter. It goes all the way from Panhandle to Texarkana. I'd like to say our three, our three counties is Fannin, Cook, and, excuse me, I've been outside, and Grayson County. And we're here to serve you, and we, March is, excuse me, yeah, March is, is Red Cross Month, and Mayor, if you would proceed, I'd like to...
and other disasters, and when an injured service member ended up in a hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offered comfort and hope. Now therefore I, Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Dentison in Texas, do hereby, as vested in the Constitution and the laws of the City of Dentison, do hereby proclaim March twenty fourteen as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans and all citizens of Dentison to support this organization and its noble mission.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
There being no other agenda items, the council meeting is adjourned, time is six thirty-one.